Ask the question and must provide one word answers. So again, it's an opportunity to go through a number of questions and to then to provide some quick answers. I do think it's important to mention that no individual other than our moderator and our panelists have had access to the questions prior to this event. With that in mind, I'd like to introduce the ma- uh, I'd like to, I'll go ahead with them, sorry. And I'd like to introduce our panelists for to- uh, for tonight who you've just met. Let's go ahead and start of course with the, uh, with the first round of questions. And we'll go ahead and get started with business and the local economy. So I'll hand it over to Randall Aguilera, uh, who can begin. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a German. Let me, before we get started there, let me first get started with our, uh, with our candidates. Uh, so I will provide candidates, uh, each one minute to provide an introductory statement. So let's get started with candidate, uh, number one. Uh, his name is Mr. Joe Ray Aguilera. So Mr. Aguilera, you have one minute.
Hello, my name is Joe Aguilera. And I'm running for a seat on Monterey Park City Council. And I've lived in the city my entire life. I love the city where I live and I love the people I honored and the best of growing up. I want to give back to the city that I truly love.
Thank you, thank you for that. Uh, let's get started with the next candidate, Councilmember Mitchell Ains.
As your councilmember and past mayor and former city treasurer, I have served as your fiscal watchdog for the past fourteen years. I was elected to protect the interests of residents and not special interests. I fought against giving a trash company a fifteen-year, hundred-million-dollar contract without competitive bidding. I fought against awarding a one-point-six-million-dollar city contract to a company that a council member worked for. I fought against our past city attorney who billed us over one-point-two-million dollars annually. I stopped the Car Club Casino wanting to build in our city. I stopped the city from forgiving a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar city loan to a business. As a councilmember whose children and wife attended our local elementary and high school, I donated ninety-two five-hundred-dollar scholarships to our community. I served as chairman and raised a hundred-and-fifty-thousand students to march into two thousand and nine Rose Parade. I'm an eight-year member of the Toronto Rosa's, former Mission and Eagles District Chair of Voice Scouts of America. I graduated from UCLA in nineteen hundreds and have an MBA in finance at Cal State.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, next candidate will be City Planning Commissioner Stephen Lam.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank Pasadena Star News, Eliot and Monterey Park Chamber of Commerce for putting this event together. I came to Monterey Park thirty years ago to live with my grandmother and went to East Los Angeles College to get my business degree. I graduated from right here with Eliot. Thank you, Eliot. Few years later, I opened my business on Garvey Avenue. And that business is still there for twenty-five years now. I joined Business Improvement District Advisory Committee and I did a lot of work in downtown Monterey Park. Now I'm a planning commissioner. I'd like to bring in quality, economic development projects, create jobs, sales tax, revenue for the city. I want everyone to live in Monterey Park, enjoy a beautiful and safe city. Thank you.
Thank you. I also like to introduce next, uh, councilmember Melissa DeRozziellisiana.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Teresa Riel Sebastian and I'm your former mayor, councilmember. And for the last four years, I've worked really hard to bring progress to the city of Monterey Park.
Daniel!
Turn it on.
That's okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Teresa Riel Sebastian. I'm your councilmember, former mayor. For the last four years, I've worked really hard to bring progress to you. Progress is political and financial transparency, retail, retail growth, open bid, green and family events, reduce inefficiency and deficits, emergency services, student and veteran services, and to make sure that senior services will not be cut. Running the city is getting sophisticated. As an attorney and businesswoman, I remain the only candidate with city council, legal and financial experience to identify issues and make suggestions and bring about solutions. These are important as our continuing, as our city continues to grow. Monterey Park is a diverse community and the residents deserve leaders that listen to the residents and represent everyone. I listen to you and then I do my own homework. I will not rubber stamp. I am from the community, for the community. I ask you to please join me and members of the community in a positive election as we determine the future of our city. Please visit my website.
Time.
Thank you.
Uh, and I apologize once again for the technical situation we have with the microphone. Thank you. Uh, next candidate is, uh, Community Participation Commissioner Delario Robinson.
Hello, everyone. I'm Delario Robinson, running for city council in Monterey Park. Of course, I'm a commissioner and in the park, uh, community participation commission. I'm also president of the Monterey Park Democratic Club. What has really inspired me to run for city council is to get all of us to work together. And I've seen over the past four years, walkouts by the mayor, city of Monterey Park, and councilmembers, seeing divisions of assignments which divided our community into Chinese-speaking and English-speaking, Latin signs advocates. I've also seen resignations, not only by city council members, but by commissioners who have felt that they have been maltreated. And it's just resonated, resonated through the community and we need better leadership.
Thank you. And our last candidate, uh, councilmember Anthony Wong.
My name is Anthony Wong. I served twice as mayor of City of Monterey Park and eight years on the council. We all know that the city is an economic body. Um, source of revenue is from property tax and surtax. And the job of city council is to be kind to our residents, to people, and we have to love our people. In order to do that, we have to respect each other. We have to treat each other as brothers and sisters. Fortunately, this council is able to work together with the administration from the city manager, fire chief, police chief, public work team, all of them working together as a team. And every staff is working together and enjoy the business so that we can all do the best, to do the best for the people of Monterey Park. They deserve, make sure that everybody living in Monterey Park will enjoy a peaceful and happy life together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all candidates for your introductory statements. So let's get ready, let's start with round one and from some set of questions. Those questions will be asked by Randall Aguilera, who is of course with the Monterey Park Chamber of Commerce. So this next segment will focus on business and the local economy. Each candidate will have one minute to respond, but also there will be a thirty-second follow-up, uh, also presented by Randall. So let me turn it over to Randall Aguilera, who will ask those questions.
Thank you very much. So my question is Monterey Park has been slowly but surely making progress in our local economy. However, when we look at cities around us, we're losing the race for major retailers and national brands. For example, Kohl's opened up in Alhambra, Walmart opened up in Rosemead, Downey's booming with recent additions of Porto, The Habit, Chip Filet and Benihana. It seems to me that when Olive Garden would rather open up in a small corner of the Montebello Mall parking lot instead of finding optimal space in Monterey Park, that something's wrong. So my question is, is Monterey Park's business climate competitive? And what will you do to bring business, jobs, and the sales tax revenues that come with that to our city?
So can you start with the councilmember Anthony Wong with first response and then we'll move on.
Well, as I just stated there, the city is an economic body and we have to do everything possible to bring in more tax revenue to the city so that we can hire more firefighters, police officers to protect the life of their residents and property residents. In order to do that, we, I am the one that started twenty years ago to resume the dump site, the superfan site, to change it to commercial use so that we can bring in, uh, uh, national tenants. For example, we have Home Depot redesigned its lease and there's a bidding plan to the city to do their remodeling in order to build the, uh, the store there. And also In-N-Out already signed a lease plus a quite a number of national stores are signing these there. In addition to that, we are building four hotels in the City of Monterey Park on letting go of our north Garvey Avenue to draw tourists so that you bring in much more tax revenue because the room tax is twelve percent of the room. Thank you.
Let's ask Commissioner Delario Robinson for response. You have one minute.
I agree. Well, what I said and what I've touched on in the beginning is that our political stability in a lot of cases hasn't been what it should be. And sometimes it seems to me that businesses, especially large chains and national chains, they don't want to come into Monterey Park with the kind of political climate that we have. And we have to stabilize our, uh, political climate, bring in the development that we have, the hotels and the marketplace. And these people, uh, we can't drive people away because of the political climate that we have. And that's, I can't underscore that enough. We have to stabilize our political climate and we have to bring people into our communities to buy with the merchants that are already there. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So we can ask councilmember DeRozziellisiana first.
Okay, this time I'll make sure the speak, uh, the microphone is on. Um, thank you for the question because that's one of the reasons why I decided to join the council and run for election. And you're right, we do lose a lot of our retail money going out of Monterey Park. As a matter of fact, our general fund, which is our operating account, thirty percent of it should account from sales tax, but yet it doesn't. It's only fifteen percent. So we do have an issue. However, this council has been very proactive in making sure that we streamline our inefficiencies whenever we see there's a problem. And we've done that time and time again. We've worked with the different developers. We've worked with, um, people that just want to come to our city and we also educate our staff to make sure that we are pro-development, pro-business. And when we see that there is an issue, we try to correct it right away. And as Anthony mentioned, In-N-Out did come to us, Home Depot did as well. And luckily, they have signed their lease. And by the way, I was very instrumental in making sure that you both like came to Monterey Park because they were a little concerned, but now they're here. And as a matter of fact, we have yogurt lamps and we have Johnnages that followed as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Stephen Lam.
I'd like to bring in revenue to the city by increasing quality shops, quality economic developments to the city so that, and also the four, uh, three hotels, we're working on that. I'd like to join the majority of the council who are doing a good job in there. So I'd like to join them and move the city forward. Uh, I'd like to take a lead on the marketplace project. Make sure that we have, uh, national content and we have quality stores to bring in, um, revenue for the city. And the city, uh, the city, it's a good time that the cities are here. So I have full confidence that I can do we- uh, do well because I have twenty-five years in the business. Uh, I know how to manage money well, how to spend it.
Thank you. Uh, next will be councilmember Mitchell Wong.
In my twenty-five years in the banking industry, uh, I'm currently a branch manager for Citizens Business Bank in San Diego. I financed businesses for the past eighteen years with the available spark of, and now with Citizens Business Bank. I know what businesses go through. What's unique about Monterey Park, um, is the fact that we have so many restaurants versus other cities like Cerritos or Alhambra that has party issues. What happens is the sales tax, one percent of the sales tax of your purchase goes from Sacramento, it comes actually back from Sacramento to our general fund that plays for police and fire service and road improvements. When you sell thirty thousand on a car, that's three hundred dollars. How many lunch specials does Monterey Park have to sell in order to gain thirty thousand? That's our challenge. Uh, we are all supportive of the marketplace, which has already assigned, uh, Home Depot and In-N-Out. And they're planning to bring in also national sporting goods store. And this is what the council has been promised and this is what the council is fighting for. To ensure that we have that stability and time.
Uh, next candidate, Joe Ray Aguilera.
Yes. We've got to create new jobs in Monterey Park. So we've got to use most resources of our budget to our city. And that is our water. Our water is precious. We have a lot of it. We need to capitalize on it, sell it. Bottle it, sell it. And keep that going. We can sell it all over the world, our Monterey Park water, bottle it. It should say Monterey Park up here. And that would be revenue for the city. That also creates a lot of jobs for the city. As for big businesses coming in to our neighborhoods, that just brings a lot of different, people, maybe some nationalities or not national, the crime. And we don't need, we water houses in our neighborhood for a reason because we like our surroundings. We like where we can raise a family. Monterey Park is made mostly resident houses, lots and lots of times.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Randall for a second follow-up.
Any candidates with answers? I want to know something a little bit more concrete. So in thirty seconds, can you tell me what the biggest hurdle is to make, bringing in new businesses to the city and expanding existing ones? And what specifically, one specific thing that you will do to clear that hurdle and bring these businesses into the city?
Okay, let's get started next with Commissioner Delario Robinson and you'll have thirty seconds.
Well, you know, I believe the image of that Monterey Park has, um, is our biggest hurdle. And once we clear that hurdle, the Monterey and hurdles in college, all Americans will be a college champion. I know about hurdles. So if we can stabilize the city council, get people to work together with some civility and quit picking at one another and who wants to be the smartest, then we'll have a better economic climate.
Thank you. Uh, next will be councilmember DeRozziellisiana.
Yes, thank you for the question. I think the biggest hurdle we have is educating the retailers. Once we do that, they're very amenable to coming to Monterey Park. And that's how we very well get a big giant like Home Depot into our city. Not only Home Depot, but In-N-Out. I mean, In-N-Out is a mega factory, as you know. It'll be, uh, those will be two huge assets when they come to our city. Not to mention those that'll follow because now we have the big giants coming in and the rest will follow. But it was because we educated the retailers that Monterey Park needs that type of amenity and we're willing to buy from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next will be Commissioner Stephen Lam.
I'd like to bring in quality shops by completing the hotels. We don't have much space available for car dealership. Everyone likes a car dealership, but where is the spot? Please tell me. Everyone knows that Monterey Park is previous for restaurant. There's nothing wrong. We just have to promote that, have the travels from the world, from all other, from the United States to recognize Monterey Park legally.
Time. Next will be councilmember Mitchell.
The biggest challenge whenever we're at international conferences of shopping centers and talk to national retailers is the perception of Monterey Park. What we have to do is explain to them that, um, that Monterey Park does have the consumer purchasing discretionary income. The largest depositor of all the banks in America is actually Garfield and Garvey. It actually has over six-hundred-million dollars of deposit. A lot of people don't know that. The number one bank is Bank of America's location on Garfield and Garvey. And what we tell people is don't look at the household income. Take a look at it.
Time. Thank you. Uh, next will be, uh, candidate Joe Ray Aguilera.
Businesses that want to come in to our city, I guess we have to get those people that are, control them. Sit them down, let this, find out what the problem is, and iron it out and get it, get it done. And if that's what people want, it will get done. So I'm not here for myself, I'm here for people.
Thank you. Uh, next will be councilmember Anthony Wong.
Monterey Park is known as a city that's hello, him?
Yeah.
Can you start again?
Yeah, can you start again?
Monterey Park is known as a business and friendly city before the year two thousand and thirteen. That's why it scared developer away. Now, the whole image has been changed. Not only that we streamline the process of helping the developer to submit their plans and everything, we invite them and encourage them to come to invest Monterey Park. We'll give them what our help they need. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it back to Randall, who will have another call.
Thank you. In two thousand and fourteen, the Monterey Park City Council approved by a quart of one fold the increase on water rates. Since implementation, many residents and restaurants have complained that the bills have overdoubled. What are your feelings on the water rate increase in fees or taxes in general? In what circumstances are you supportive of raising taxes?
Okay, we'll get started with councilmember DeRozziellisiana.
Uh, thirty seconds. I could support the water rate increase and the sewer tax increase. People think it was for the drought and it's actually to, uh, to fix our infrastructure. So many of our pipes were bursting over and over again. And every time they did, for example, our sewer pipes kept busting. And then you would have that sewage spill going to a home. And as a result, the city would be involved in a lawsuit. It kept happening at such a frequent rate that none of us wanted to do it, but we saw that there was an important need here. Nobody wants to raise taxes, but in that event, it would have cost us a lot more to not do anything about it. So as a result, I was, I was for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Commissioner Stephen Lam.
I support the water rate bill increase. I hate to increase bill, but then there's no choice. Our infrastructure underneath of the road is old. So we need to replace it so that our next generation, they do not have to worry back to them.
Okay, next will be councilmember Mitchell Ains.
I was the councilmember that voted no because I felt the analysis was flawed. Um, when I first talked to the public works director, uh, a former public works director, he said it would only cost roughly fifty million dollars. Now it bounces as high as a hundred and ten million dollars. And I, I explained to them that you can't take it out of one generation. Obviously, you're not going to do the work overnight. You have to spread it and the financing has to be in sync with when the work is being done. It should be spread over probably twenty or thirty years, but it should not be in the burden of the current residents.
Thank you. Next will be Joe Ray Aguilera.
Yes, our will, our water bill is going up and our, we can get taxed on that part. We need to come up with a better solution that, and we send that water bill help with council candidate. Come up with a better idea. We need to reach out to the community and get access from the community, from the best ideal and the best, best way to come to the conclusion of, of not raising all our taxes because that's going to hurt a lot of people, renters, owners, homes. A lot of people are going to lose, move out of Monterey Park because of that water bill coming up. Our stuff's going way out of style.
Time, thank you. Next will be councilmember Anthony Wong.
City of Monterey Park is almost one hundred years old. A lot of the water plants
Test it.
Thank you. Next year, City of Monterey Park is one hundred years old. So most of the water plants and sewer lines are between fifty to one hundred years old. And many of them are reaching an age there to be replaced. So the water rate of City of Monterey Park is the lowest in San Gabriel Valley. Air is about eighteen dollars a month. One of the other cities is about fifty dollars. We need to replace all of those before it cause any trouble to any homes or businesses. So we have to do it as a part of what they increased.
Thank you. Next will be Commissioner Delario Robinson.
I support the water rate increase. Of course, I've been paying, uh, that high water rate since I've been in Monterey Park. I live on the other side of Monterey Park and my water bill is at least a hundred dollars a month. And so, uh, it's, the water rate increase, I believe, is justified. We're not only going to, uh, have it put in our, our streets, but we're also going to have our streets paved. And that'll cancel out a lot of those potholes that we all, you know, with.
Well, candidates, that concludes round one. So let's move on to round two. Uh, round two will focus on public trust in government. Uh, those questions will be asked by Frank Yoril with the Pasadena Star News. Frank?
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Okay, I think actually we're going to start with a question about Athens that's come up a little bit tonight. Uh, in two thousand and eleven, residents of Monterey Park approved a measure B B that required the city to obtain a competitive bid before deciding where to award trash hall contracts. And that's going to expire on the contract with Athens that is in two thousand and seventeen. So if you're elected to the city council, one, you plan on voting to award Athens a meal? Two, do you believe that competitive bid process is a good idea? And three, are there other public services in which you believe there should be an open bid process?
Okay, so once again for this round, we will have one minute to respond to the question. We'll get started with Commissioner Stephen Lam.
Measure B B is regarding the Athens trash services. I myself satisfy the services during the life. And I do think we need to discuss it, uh, if I got elected, uh, to find out the best way to find the management company who is the best fit to the city of Monterey Park. Uh, the way it's right now looking, it's not high. It's, uh, very compatible to our city as far as being asked. So, um, I don't, I don't complain to the current disposal company. However, um, it's a, it's all a process. When I got elected, I worked with other councils to select the person.
Thank you. Uh, next will be councilmember Mitchell Ains.
Uh, as I mentioned in my opening statement, that I was against Athens receiving a fifteen-year contract of a hundred million dollars without competitive bidding. And my question is, what's wrong with competitive bidding? Because it benefits the residents and business owners of Monterey Park. What you have to do is determine the service level that you expect from, from any vendor. And what you do is you go out for bidding. And what these companies will do is they will, they will compete and hopefully bring down the price. And that's why you have competitive bidding. I'm for competitive bidding. I've never been supported by Athens because I've taken this stance. And I realize other candidates have received contributions and are not quite on the issue. But I will always fight for the benefit of the residents and the business owners who saw a spike in their fees nearly two and a half times on the business, uh, uh, retail stores when they complained that their fees went up two and a half times. Uh, I'm against that. I'm going to fight for open bid because it's the benefit for the whole community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next will be candidate Joe Ray Aguilera.
As for the, as for the trash service, I like our trash service. We have a good trash service. They take away everything we put out there. Put a smile on their faces. Guys are good. The trucks are nice and clean and they do a good job. Open bid is good if they're going to provide the same service that Athens is giving us. Those guys are good. How many trash companies are there bidding on it? Are they coming to bid on it? The only thing, problem I think that we have is Athens didn't let the residents know what they're totally capable of doing for them. We just have anything goes in, come back in three months, put everything out of the curb. A lot of residents don't know that you can just call a company up and say, I have a large pickup, come pick it up. You know, I've constantly been getting asked for that, about trash they got from the backyard. They don't know how to get rid of it. They, they have to be reminded, I have to remind them, Artel, call a company up and ask for a big pickup. Art's pickup, the next day, other trash league, all that stuff's picked up, gone. Athens is doing a great job, I think.
Time. Time, thank you, thank you. Next will be councilmember Anthony Wong.
Measure B B was voted by the voters of the Monterey Park and I agreed to go open bid. Our job as city council is to do the best, to look for the best service for the residents of Monterey Park. Not only the quality of service, but at the lowest possible price. So I agree to my bid. All know that, I agree that Athens is doing a good job and I'm happy with the service. However, to do our best for the residents of Monterey Park, we have to go out for competitive bidding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Commissioner Delario Robinson.
Well, in our American history, you know, we've had monopolies in the past. And I think all of us that went to grade school saw Boss Tweed and he had a monopoly. But that's why competitive bidding is so important. But you also, on the other hand, have to look at Athens who provide quality service. And quality is, um, a trait that you just don't see all the time. So you have to stick with the quality. And we do have to have competitive bidding, bidding cheap. And we do have to have competitive bidding to keep services like Athens and Athens for a longer price. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last response will be given by council member Deidre Sarrazza.
Yes, thank you. I do believe in the open bid process. It's not a question of whether Athens is doing a good job or not. Open bid just means you get to come hook, just like you would with the contractor. So we have to look and see what services are they going to provide? Are they calling services? Is that what our residents need and at what cost? You know, when you're talking about here in the city of Monterey Park, our trash bill is much higher than some beach cities, much richer beach cities than here in Monterey Park. And our businesses, their rates went up by three times, three times what they normally came. So I think that open bid is really important, not only when it comes to our trash services, but also when it comes to public works, projects, and also when we're engaging consultants. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll turn it over to Frank for some follow-up questions.
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to follow up with a question that follows along the lines of openness, and it has to do with transparency. And how far are you willing to go to ensure that the city of Monterey Park operates in a fair and transparent fashion? And a couple of examples, like a example of our, in the selection of state a city manager, or the selection of a police chief, or the sharing of Form 700s. Are you willing to do all of that in a deal?
For this round, once again, you'll have thirty seconds to respond. And we'll get started with council member Mitchell Ink.
I have always been an advocate for transparency. It allows the residents and taxpayers to see what has been decided. A lot of times, we have close or sensitive, and a lot of times, the council members are deciding things in the millions that they're giving away. So I would be an advocate of any transparency, including the hiring of our city manager. And the city manager who hires the department heads. I think it should be open in terms of their process, so it keeps the system fair and honest. Thank you.
Time. Thank you. Next will be Joel Rayagro.
For the transparency, I'd have to get in there with the people who are dealing with the major subjects and the major problems for the city. And fix all that. I need more information to really grasp and answer that question, that answer right. So that I have to dig into it and do my homework.
Time. Thank you. Next will be council member Anthony Wong.
The city council has to like only highly a legal counsel and a city manager. Other than that, you will be the job of the city manager. However, the city has a personnel commission and also has a director of human resources to recommend who is going to hire. In addition to that, during my tenure as mayor, I host three open houses, and we have everything in the screen at the lobby to make sure that we display all the process, all the city business on the screen, so that everybody can look at it.
Time. Thank you. Next will be Commissioner Delargo Robinson.
Transparency is a big issue now. And when I come to the city council meetings, sometimes I'm not really getting the full information. And I know we can do a much better job of transparency in the city of Monterey Park. We have a high grad, college graduate rate in each household. And people are not silly or dumb anymore. We have to educate our people, and we have to let them know exactly what's going on as much as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next will be council member Deidre Sarrazza.
Yes, thank you. I think transparency is a huge issue, and that's why it's part of my progress, political and financial transparency. If the public does not see nor understand what their government is doing, then they start to lose trust in your government, and that's the worst thing that can happen. And I think the hiring of key magical positions would be a great way to start. Since I've been on the council, I make sure that our working budgets, not just our final budgets, but our working budgets are also made available online so that when the council is going through the budget session, the public can follow along. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last response will be given by Commissioner Stephen Land.
Transparency is a big issue here. I attend a lot of meetings for the commission. A lot of time, we are not allowed to know a lot of stuff. If you involve in citizen business, you will know. But however, as I know that when a city makes a decision on the employment, on the real estate deals, they're not allowed to let other people know except elected officials.
Thank you. So I'll turn it over to Frank for the second follow-up question.
Okay, thank you. Why should we elect you?
So once again, for this round, we will have thirty seconds to present your response. We'll get started with Joel Rayagro.
Why should we elect him? Someone who will stand up for the little man and the big man if he needs it. Not afraid to stir the pot, get done with the gritty, where it boils all down to. Step on people's toes if they have to get the job done. I like to crack a whip and get things sufficiently running correctly. Yeah, the city's a little sad right now. We need to turn it up, stir the pot a little bit, find out where it's all going, and I don't mind getting in there and cracking a whip.
Thank you. Next will be council member Anthony Wong.
The reason why I run for election is we, the city, this council is doing everything from underground up to the sky. Why I say that is we are replacing all the water pipe source lines. We repair all the roads and streets. We updated thirteen parts in the city of Monterey Park. And also, we are installing water meters for every public business. And also, we are replacing all the streetlights, about four thousand streetlights with LED. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Delargo Robinson.
Why should you elect someone like me? Because you should be trying to elect the best person, the best type of people that you know that are going to do the job and is going to do the best job for the citizens of Monterey Park. And the city of Los Angeles, where I came, I was president of the Los Angeles Council of Churches, Chair of Community Issues Commission. And here in Monterey Park, I'm president of the Monterey Park Democratic Club, along with being a commissioner for community participation.
Thank you. Next will be council member Deidre Sarrazza.
Yes, thank you. You should elect me because I have legal and financial experience. I roll up my sleeves and I get the work done. I'm not afraid of that. I ask questions, and you know I do my homework if you watch a council meeting. I will not compromise my ethics, and I am from the community, for the community. That means I am for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Commissioner Stephen Land.
I run for this council because I love the city and I care about the city. That I'm proud to call Monterey Park my home. I'm a successful businessman for over twenty-five years in the city. I'm a planning commissioner. I know what the city is to get it done, and I'm the best qualified candidate.
Thank you. Our last response will be given by council member Mitchell Ink.
You know, my wife and I have fulfilled her professional training. My daughter now is in Virginia in pharmacy school. Her son is in UC Irvine. But the fact that my wife and I are stage, and she's a senior attorney for Southern California Medicine, is we can give back to the community. So we organize events like a salute to our veterans, and this is the fifth year. And also, it's some enchanted evening concert, which is our tenth year. We also host events where it's free for law enforcement, like a Hoiser Bracy training session for police.
Time. Well, thank you for those responses, and let's move on to round three. Round three will focus on the quality of life here in Monterey Park. That I turn it to Dr. Moyer, who will be asking those questions.
Good evening. This is a public safety question, and it's what should the proper function of the police be? I understand that there have been some local home robberies lately. And the considerable emphasis of the police force is on traffic enforcement and violations. What should the proper role of the Monterey Park Police Department be?
Okay, so for this round, once again, you'll have one minute to respond. So we'll get started with council member Anthony Wong.
Public safety is very important to the people of Monterey Park. That's why we have to have new developments, particularly hotels, which will bring in twelve percent of tax revenue for every dog that is baying in City of Monterey Park. Our police department, we used to have eighty-two sworn officers. Now it's down to seventy-two. So we have to do every possible there, particularly of season forty-seven, and then the alignment of the state government, so that the early release of prisoners. So we have to increase our police officers to patrol our streets and roads. Make sure that every home is protected. This is my very first job for me, if elected. I have to make sure that we will finish all the shopping centers, all the jobs. Thank you.
Next will be Commissioner Robinson.
Well, you know, public safety is one of our number-one consultants. And the police department is here to serve and protect. And at all costs, we're supposed to ensure that we stop racial profiling, we stop unnecessary ticketing, and we must have the best, well-trained police department that we could possibly have. Thank you.
Okay, next, council member Seleska.
Thank you. Yes, the role of the police is to protect and serve. And here in Monterey Park, I just want to clarify, we haven't had robberies. We haven't had burglaries, unfortunately. That's a result of realignment. The one thing that we do have in Monterey Park that makes us very unique is we have a very strong neighborhood watch, not only neighborhood watch, but business watch. And so that means neighbors being an extension of the police's eyes and ears. And when they do get a call about a burglary or anything like that, they are extremely quick to respond. And I have to say, I might be biased, but I think our Monterey Park police rocks. And I just wanted to add one more thing. We happen to have in Monterey Park one of the lowest crime rates in the San Diego Valley, and that is a result of the police department and the residents, the commercial districts working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Commissioner Stephen Land.
Public safety is my number-one agenda. Our police is doing their job. However, it can be rendered better. We have to develop, bring in quality development in order to increase revenue, so that we will provide and offer the police and fire the most updated equipment they need. We have to train them the best way we could to hire more police. We need to make sure that the Monterey Park neighborhood is the safest in the city of Los Angeles.
Next will be council member Mitchell Ink.
The Monterey Park Police Department has to do more with less, unfortunately, unless we have an increase in revenue for their department. They're right now in short of some officers. The neighborhoods, we have a great neighborhood watch program. I know all my neighbors on my screen, and many times we call and find out if there's somebody that's just suspicious, and they've turned out to be actually burglaries in the neighborhood. We've called those too. The police officers are terrific in Monterey Park. Can they use more officers? Absolutely. And that's our job in the city council, to find an extra revenue stream that we can budget and support them in a true fashion. Thank you.
That's responded by Joel Rayagro.
Our police department does a great job of protecting our neighborhoods. Their response, when you call them, they show up right away. They're trained. A new generation is coming up. As long as the older cats that are in there right now are trained, that are the ones to do everything they know and experienced out there, to make our police department great. I feel that they just should give them everything possible to make their jobs better and be more professional. And they need to get out there, maybe do some more walks, and get to know the neighborhoods that are protected. Get to know people, you know, get to know the people that are on their beat. Stop talking, be more friendly. Get to know them on a personal basis, where they don't feel like when they call the police department, they're going to be shunned, or, ah, and they're mean, you know, they got to be more friendly. More towards the citizens to be professionals and help us protect and service. They're working for us. Let them show the qualities that they aren't working for us.
Thank you. Let's move on to some follow-up questions from Dr. Moyer. Dr. Moyer?
Yes. East Los Angeles College brings in over thirty thousand students and visitors to Monterey Park every week. What should the appropriate relationship be between the city and the college, and how can it improve even more?
For this round, once again, you'll have thirty seconds to respond, so let's get started with Commissioner Robinson.
Well, East Los Angeles College is, should be an integral part of the city of Monterey Park. It is in Monterey Park. That should be our college. But our relationship has not been the kind of relationship that we are that close. So we should try to foster a better relationship between the city of Monterey Park and East Los Angeles College, where people in the high school area here would automatically go to East Los Angeles College.
Thank you. Next will be council member Seleska.
Thank you. Yes, East LA College is part of our family. It is the largest employer here in Monterey Park, and it's important that we have events such as this to bring synergy between both of us. For example, when I was mayor, I hosted a city council meeting here on your campus, and it was very much well-received. And I think that we should work together to continue to have that kind of relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Commissioner Land.
East Los Angeles College is my home, and Monterey Park, I proudly call, is my home. It's all brother and sister and partner. However, if I get elected, I will work very closely with East Los Angeles College to bring more revenue to the city, to work out closely with these leaders, and to benefit the residents of Monterey Park.
Thank you. Next will be council member Mitchell.
You know, as a branch manager for citizens of Kansas, I oversee the accounts of municipality, nonprofits, and even for private schools. And there is a synergy that is created when the private and the public sectors meet, because there are facilities that both can help with each other. And when I hear of thirty thousand students, I think of thirty thousand consumers that can come into Monterey Park as long as we're providing them the quality of service and restaurants that the students would appreciate. It's a synergy that both win.
Time. Thank you. Next will be Joel Rayagro.
We need to get out there and meet those people. Need to interview them, talk to them, see what's on their minds. See what subjects they would throw at us. Create events that bring them together. You know, have luncheons or other programs where they want to come and be involved. So we got to show them that we care, and we want to give off in their lives because we're interested. And make it happen.
Thank you. The last response will be given by council member Wong.
East LA College has a stillborn of thirty-five thousand. City of Monterey Park has a population of sixty thousand, so we have more than half of our population. So I also always emphasize that City of Monterey Park has to have built a close relationship as partners together. I came to your football game one time between East LA College and Los Angeles City College. I really enjoyed it. It was so good. And also, I understand that East LA College has a swimming pool, tapas, olympic. So we have to work together more closely. Thank you.
Time. Thank you. Dr. Moyer?
Yes. Usually in city elections, voter participation as well. What would you do to encourage civic engagement by young people, you know, elementary school students, middle school, high school students, so that they're a well-prepared electorate into the future?
Again, thirty seconds for a response, and we'll get started with council member Seleska.
Yes, thank you. I think one of the things we need to do with the younger generation is speak their language. They're texting, they are tweeting, they are on all those other type of communications, and that's the best way to reach them. I think just calling on the phone, most of them don't use their phones for telephone calls anymore. They use them to tweet to each other or text. And so I think it's communicating to them via a communication channel that they can understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Land.
Young generation tends to not turn out their vote because lack of education, lack of encouragement. They feel it's no benefit my vote, but that's wrong. You're giving up your future. You're giving up your opportunities. So we have to work with education institutions like ELAC to put them in education so the kids will learn. If they vote, they control their future. Thank you.
Council member Ink.
When Adam Schiff was our congressman for part of the city of Monterey Park, he had the Affordable Care Act town hall meeting at our Hamper High School. he had the Affordable Care Act town hall meeting at Alhambra High School, and there were thousands of people there, and with, with, uh, different views. I brought my children to the time, and they were in elementary school and high school, because I wanted to see what they were watching on the news, but live, and it was almost like two sides that were ready to fight, and my son was saying, we better go because it's gonna get violent, but I said, no, this is what you're watching on television, and, and you're gonna enjoy it.
Thank you. Uh, Joe Rayagula.
Yes, we need to show our young generation how much it is, how excited it is to run for city government, local governments. We gotta teach them and educate them how important it is to vote. A lot of the young women and young men died in their services that have that opportunity for us to vote, we gotta exercise that, right? We gotta show them how, how to vote and how, to educate them, so their vote makes a count. Every vote counts. There's a lot of time.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, council member Wong?
I served as school board member about thirty years ago, Gavis School District. I understand the importance of educating the young people. During my term as mayor, uh, this year, I make donations to almost thirty different organizations involving young people and elder people, and make sure that, to bring them to the City of Monterey Park, to understand the politics, how to get involved, so that they will become the future leaders of our country.
Thank you. Uh, the last response will be given by Commissioner Robinson.
Let, let's face it, in, in the United States, we're not really having a real good political climate, and that's important, and for my children, I have my daughter here, my wife is here, dad's president of the Democratic Club in Monterey Park, we have to present the image that people want, the young people wanna follow and be like, that's the bottom line.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on to the last round. So the last round, we call it rapid response. So what does that mean? That means that, uh, I'll be asking you seven questions. Uh, with rapid responses, you could respond by saying yes or no, or really quick, short answer. The most that we want to give is fifteen seconds to respond, uh, and, uh, so we wanna have some fun, and at the same time, we wanna get some good information from you. So this time around, I think it started with, uh, Joe Rayagula, and then work my way down this way to each question. So let me get started with the first one. That first question is, in two thousand sixteen, California voters may approve recreational use of marijuana. Would you support or oppose a marijuana dispensary opening in the city?
I would support that, yes.
Thank you, thank you, that's good, that's good. So, uh, again, uh, let me turn the question, same question over to council member Amy.
Uh, no, actually, the fires, the door was started by three guys smoking pot, and they started a fire up there, I would say no.
Commissioner Lamb?
I would say no, I oppose it.
Council member Sebastian?
I would oppose it.
Commissioner Robinson?
I would oppose it.
Council member Wong?
Definitely no, I oppose it.
Next question, question number two. Many cities, small and large, from Alhambra to Anaheim, have moved forward with district voting. Do you support implementing district voting in Monterey Park? Yes or no? So let's get started with council member Amy.
Uh, I would support it because it clearly defines where someone lives and, and will represent that, that community where he lives.
Thank you. Commissioner Lamb?
I would support.
Okay, council member Sebastian?
Uh, not only would I support it, I brought it about a council meeting, because I think it's important that we have a group from different parts of our community on the council.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
I think I would support it because of the competition, you may not get the quality of persons in every district.
Thank you. Council member Wong?
I oppose it. I introduced a term limit which was passed by the voters in the year two thousand thirteen.
Yes, uh, Joe?
Yes, I support it. It would be great to educate everybody how much important it is to vote.
The third question, we'll get started with Commissioner Lamb. That third question is, who is the one individual or organization that has endorsed you, that you are most proud of? Commissioner Lamb?
I'm proud to say the fire police endorsed me.
Okay, thank you. Council member Sebastian?
Well, after my husband, it would be the National Women's Political Action Committee.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
Los Angeles County District Attorney Jackie Lacy, who's gonna endorse me.
Thank you. Council member Wong?
I endorse me from locals, everybody, and all every organization. The one I go to follow is to each other.
Joe Rayagula?
Father God and my neighbors and friends.
Okay, thank you. Council member Amy?
There's no one more important than residents of Monterey Park, when I was number one in the, number one in the last election.
Thank you. Let's move on to question number four, and, and that will be, uh, uh, council member Sebastian, if you could first respond to that. The question is, how much have you raised for this campaign? And how much of your own money are you committing to this race? Councilman?
Yes, thank you. To date, I have raised twenty-seven thousand, of which one thousand dollars was donated by my husband.
Commissioner Robinson?
I've only raised like five thousand and about fifteen hundred I've put into my own campaign, and money is a big issue now, because people don't have money, and I don't really wanna ask them for money, but I know it's, it's a part of the political process.
Time. Uh, council member Wong?
I raised about one hundred thousand dollars because everybody want to donate to my campaign.
I have, they just sponsors, my fundraisers, they all know, I'm low budget, I know how to allocate some money to, to win. Now, a lot of people said you have to have a lot of money to win in the city, and you wonder how much people are gonna spend on it, and why do they want to become the city council, because we paid and all that, but I prove everybody wrong, that you don't have the big money to meet people and get their money.
Time, time.
I've actually proved that you don't have to be the number-one fundraiser in order to win a race. Uh, I raised twelve thousand dollars, a little worth of twelve thousand dollars, and I believe that organizations should debate and charities and nonprofits, and shouldn't be spent on campaigns for a stipend that earns only five hundred dollars a week.
Thank you. Commissioner Lamb?
I fundraised about forty thousand dollars. They love to donate me money. Here's why, because I'm new, and I need the funds to deliver my message to the voters. I also funded another eight thousand dollars to my.
Time, time. So if you can, again, stick to a short answer, can. Uh, question five, and this question will be started with Commissioner, uh, Robinson. There are three seats up for election in March. Which two other candidates would you like to serve with?
Well, you know, I've got a lot of candidates, I think everybody's doing a great job, but Anthony Wong has been a great mentor, uh, for the city council in particular, and I would just draw a blank on my other choice.
Councilman Wong?
I would like to see, right, see Mitchell and Robinson, Kevin and his old friends today.
Okay, thank you. Joe Rayagula?
Me, myself, and I.
Council member Amy?
You know, I appreciate Teresa Rial's passion. My wife is an attorney, she's an attorney, but she does her homework more than most of the people on the city council, and I appreciate her, her insightfulness and her compassion for the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Lamb?
I'd like former mayor and current council member Anthony Wong to be re-elected, he's my mentor, I'd like to join here to work with other council members to move the city forward.
Council member Sebastian?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I think that council member, former mayor Mitchell Amy, brings a lot to the table. He is your principal watchdog, he has a lot of history, and, uh, sometimes when you have different viewpoints, he brings in a viewpoint that kinda meshes everyone, so I think that, uh, Mitchell, I, I would love to continue to serve him. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to question number six, and we'll get started with council member Wong. If elected, you will serve one term as mayor. Please name one current or former mayor from another city who you will reach out for advice.
Well, uh, I've been working with everybody together. The one that I admire most is still, uh, Congresswoman Julie Chu. So the other cities, you know, I know they're very well, but I know the City of Monterey Park not much better. I wanna focus on the City of Monterey Park. I'm not doing whatever I can for the City of Monterey Park. The other cities is dead, so I, I admire them, but then what I admire them is to.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Joe Rayagula?
Uh, Margaret Park, go to Saint George again.
Okay, thank you. Council member?
Uh, former mayor Betty Tatchu, who started East West Savings Bank, was a developer, was the first Chinese, uh, woman attorney in Southern California, and sent to USC, and even though I'm a brood, uh, she's the one that I've talked to.
Commissioner Lamb?
Congresswoman Julie Chu, former mayor of Monterey Park. She has all the groundwork here, starting from Gavis School Board Member, City Council, State Assembly, uh, State, uh, Board of Equalization, and now she's in Congress to represent us.
Thank you. Council member Sebastian?
Uh, that is one that I could not choose, I am the representative of the city on the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, I've served in thirty-one other cities in the San Gabriel Valley, and I'm also the representative of the Southern California Association of Governments, where I served with eighty-eight other cities, and I think that each of the mayors, I would reach out to them because it's really important, because we all have different issues that cross boundaries, and it's important to have a regional front, especially when we're trying to get federal funds. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
You know, I love Mike E, he's a great mentor, and any advice that he could give, I would listen to closely, but the person that I would reach out to would be Eric Barsetti, somebody that's bright and intelligent, and, uh, someone close to my own band, in my own band.
Okay, thank you. The last question, so we'll go back to Joe Rayagula, and that last question is, voters approve term limits on city council members. So we will start with senior faces serving. Doesn't make sense, okay. Voters approve term limits on city, uh, on city council members. Can you name one resident you would like to see run in the future?
My uncle.
Okay, great. Uh, council member Amy?
I've asked so many, declined.
Commissioner Lamb?
Myself.
Council member Sebastian?
There are so many qualified residents in Monterey Park, so I think anybody that has the time and the passion, um, and the background and the commitment, I would, I would support. Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
You know, I have two children in training. They both run track after dad, and they both run top, well, one's a college and one's an outstanding student, just like the dad, so I'm telling the next generation.
Council member Wong?
I have developed into youth term limits, the reason why is I want to open up the city council for everyone, who are not qualified, competent to run. Those that are real good candidates, that are very dedicated to work for the people of the city, constructive, positive, show kindness and love to people, make sure that we all enjoy life together. That's what I would say.
Thank you, councilman. Well, ladies and gentlemen, if you could join me in a round of applause for our candidates. Thank you, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, the Pasadena Star News, the Monterey Park Chamber of Commerce for, uh, co-hosting this event with us. I want to thank, uh, all the candidates for being real nice to me, as, as I can ask the most questions, so thank you for being cooperative and staying to our, our, our rules, ground rules, in order to make it a fair debate today. So thank you all for being here this evening. Don't forget to vote on Tuesday, March third.
Second?
March third, Tuesday, March third, so please, please vote. Everyone, thank you and have a good evening.